Alrighty, if we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Mr. Deputy Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Bond Crooks, Benedetti.
Here.
Cabot Hutton.
Present.
Hornbeck.
Here.
Peruggi.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you.
Mayor, make a motion to excuse Councilmember Bond Crooks.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. First item we have on the agenda is the minute approval of the May 6th, 2024 public hearing in regular meeting.
So moved.
Smart.
Moved and supported for approval of minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Alright, we've got three separate presentations for you all this evening, and don't worry, you are all okay to leave immediately after them. We're wrapping up, so don't feel obligated to stay. But we have a couple, well, actually, yeah, a few groups with a lot to be proud of here and a lot of good stuff to share. So the first one that we'll bring down, if we could get a motion to make part of the regular meeting, would be our presentation for the Trenton High School Class of 2024 Top 10 Students.
So moved.
Alright, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Alright, we'll get started here, so. Thank you. Alright, so I'll go one by one here if folks want to come down, and then I'll let you take the microphone, and you get to do the same spiel you've gotten to do for the last, like, three months and are gonna get to do for the next three months of, well, introduce your parents or any of your family members that might be here, but then, you know, where you're going to school, what you might be studying, or what your plans are here after high school. So. First up here, and I think a lot of, I think, you know, we're gonna note too, that GPAs are unbelievably high for this group here, too. Seeing these numbers well above four, which is a little bit new, where my friends used to tell their parents you couldn't go higher than three.
Is that what you told your mom and dad?
I said, "My friends," I didn't say myself here. Not gonna name any names, but again, a lot of students here with a lot to be proud of. And so we'll get started, and also I will apologize in advance if I do mispronounce any names. Feel free to correct me, please. That's certainly important. So. First up we have here is Kayan Kabian, number 10th in the class with a 4.3273 GPA. And again, we'll have you do introductions and stay up here, too, because I know council will want to shake your hand after the fact here, too. So congratulations, Kayan.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. If you want to introduce your family, would you?
I'm here with my parents and sister. I will be attending the University of Michigan for civil engineering.
Alright. Alright, next up we have Ms. Kaitlin Bullard, number nine here, with a 4.3395 GPA.
I'm here with my parents and my little sister, and next year I will be going to the University of Michigan Dearborn to study chemistry.
Alright, next up we have number eight, Mr. Joshua Tittle with a 4.3576 GPA.
I'm with my mom and dad, and I will be attending Western Michigan University for aviation.
Alright. Next up, we have London Williams, the 4.4094 GPA.
I am here with my parents. Next year I'm attending Central Michigan University to major in biomedical sciences on a pre-med track, and I'm also playing softball there.
Next up, Ms. Emily Smith with a 4.4121 GPA. Congratulations.
I'm here with my mom, and I'm going to the University of Michigan Ann Arbor to study psychology on a pre-med track.
Next up, we have Delaney King, the 4.421 GPA. Congratulations. Of course.
Hi, I'm here with my mom tonight. I'm going to University of Michigan Ann Arbor for psychology through LSA and a bachelor's of arts in music through SMTD.
Nice. Next up, we have Ms. Allison Marshall with a 4.4386 GPA. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm here with my mom, and I'm going to Michigan State University to study psychology.
Next up, we have Kira Johnson with a 4.503 GPA.
Hi, I'm here with my mom and my boyfriend, and I'm going to Central Michigan University to study education.
Next up, we have Ms. Claire Hop with a 4.5179 GPA. Congratulations. Of course.
Hi, I'm here with my parents and my sisters, and I'm going to the University of Michigan, and I'm majoring in biology on a pre-med track.
And last, but certainly not least, in this context, of course, here, we have the class of valedictorian here, Blake Chesney with a 4.5273 GPA. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm with my parents, my grandparents, and my siblings, and I will be attending the University of Notre Dame to study political science on a pre-law track.
All it took was the person in the number-one spot in the class to say that they wanted to go into government, right? And so, good job. But so, thank you again. Congratulations to you all. You certainly made everyone here proud and your entire city proud. And I think that, also want to give a round of applause to all the families that are here. I think whether you want to admit it or not, none of them would be here without you, too. So, congratulations to y'all. Before you sit down, I know everyone on council wants to shake your hands, too, so if you want to just bring it around the circle here, too. So, congratulations. Congratulations again, guys. Not everyone all at once, alright.
So no, we're making the political science major stay, right?
Tried to get extra credit earlier, right?
Yeah, you tried me, but you couldn't pay me.
Alright, so next up here, we, again, get to keep the train rolling with things that we get to brag about around town. So, again, I guess we'll take a motion, too, to make this part of the regular meeting, but for the Trenton High School figure skating team here to do a presentation. We've got a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. No further discussion. Unanimously so ordered. So I will actually bring up the coaches first. They could talk a little bit about the season, then we'll get into the certificate passing here. So, we've got the Level B and Level C Trenton High School figure skating teams, who also, again, have quite a bit to brag about for all their accomplishments, certainly statewide here. So we've got our coaches Sandy Moss, Amber Dinalari, and Stephanie Riker. If you all want to do any introductions or talk about the team a little bit, too, certainly more than happy. No pressure.
That's probably gonna be.
You've got a lot to brag about, we know.
First of all, we do have a combined team of Trenton, Carlson, and Windat. We're very proud of them. The team this year, both teams qualified for states. So the two levels, like you said, Level B won their district championship, District II, and Level C were silver medalists. Like I said, that qualified them for state championships. We're very proud to say that the Level C team placed 10th out of the state, obviously, state championships, and our Level B team, proud to say, are state champions. So we're very proud of the girls and all the support of the parents and everyone.
Stephanie or Amber?
No, I knew it.
We do have a couple that are missing.
You lost the rock-paper-scissors match and had to get here. So, yes, we'll still give you the certificates for anyone that's not here, too, but we want to make sure that we recognize those that do. So first up, we have Caitlin Bentley. Alright, hot start, okay, but round of applause.
Wow, wow, wow.
Oh, alright, good timing. If you want to do any introduction to your family or anything that might be here. Do you want to give a speech on behalf of the entire team while you're up here?
We do want to say thank you for including us tonight.
Absolutely. Okay. So we'll have you stay up here, too, because everyone on council will want to shake your hands, too. So. How about, and again, I apologize if I do mispronounce any of these, please feel free to correct me. Lexi Galuska? Alright. It sounds like you wouldn't have been afraid to do that, too. So congratulations, Lexi. Here you are. Any introductions?
I'm here with my mom, who is also my coach. I've been doing high school team for four years, and I'm very happy to say that I won states with the best team.
That's what we like to do.
A little baby.
Awesome. Gotcha, okay. Very cool. Well, congratulations. Delaney Hale.
I'll introduce. With Delaney, she competed at the national final and won her event for national novice solo dance, so we are very proud of her.
This is all your time to brag. Feel free to, don't shy away from it here. Oh, perfect, yes, someone's gotta do it for them. Rebecca Kubiac? Congratulations. Natalie Michalis, Natalia Michalis, I apologize.
Uh, no.
Montana Violetta. Okay, well, congratulations to Montana as well, too. Antoinette Bretiken.
Oh, I don't want to say. We can skate, we just don't talk.
Hey, hey, that is a, okay, I'm not here to judge there. Adriana DiNessi.
Uh, no, thank you.
Alright, slide down just a little bit here. Abigail Durham.
She's not here.
Alrighty. Kalen Schlecht. Congratulations. Nope, you're good, too. Alright. Addison Somerset. Alrighty. Madison Somerset. Alright, congratulations to Madison, too. Well, congratulations to you all again. You've made Trenton very proud, and now we know that you continue, will continue to do so. And I know council will want to shake your hands as well, and congratulations to the coaches, and again, same to all the families left, too. They wouldn't be here without your support. So, great job, guys. Yeah, start on that end and.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, let you take care of it.
Very nice.
Of course.
Congrats.
Give your mom a hard time for me, okay? Let me guess, you coached the Windat team? You're that one?
Yeah, yep, thank you. Alrighty. What was this all on today? Oh, yeah, okay. Alright, next item we have on the agenda here is a presentation from our DDA director, Angelina Pousino. If we could get a motion to make this part of the presentation, part of the regular meeting for the DDA 2024 informational meeting number one. We've got motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. So, Angelina, feel free to take it away.
Well, good evening, mayor and city council. This is the first-ever informational meeting. So a little background. So, um, so under the Public Act 57 of 2018, Section 9110, you are going to be getting two informational meetings a year. This is just to gloss over basically what the DDA has done. This is all stuff you know, because you've obviously approved it all, but just for the public to know, and also just to see, if you haven't remembered at all, to kind of see what we've been doing, where our money's been going. So, um, this report's gonna be for December 2023 to May 2024, and all the actions, and it was approved under the DDA meeting of May 9th. So the first thing, obviously, I'm up here, this is new DDA director. I started just on April 8th. So you're gonna be seeing me a lot more. We also got a new DDA board member, Leonard Bochenek. He's now on our board. He had his first meeting on April 11th. He's a Trenton resident and was appointed, and obviously approval from you as well. So this is our current DDA board members. Usually we're supposed to have 11 members, including the mayor. We still have one vacancy left. If you have any recommendations, please send them to me or the mayor as we're looking to fill in that last spot. So one of the things the DDA did was allocate $3,000 to help support the downtown Trenton Winterfest, hosted by All About Grace and multiple other participating downtown businesses. This money went to kind of help with, um, different things to kind of help marketing and to kind of support vendors. The other thing the DDA also did was allocate $3,000 to the Galentine's Night. This was hosted by Freckles and Grit and the Vintage Market Mercantile. Again, just kind of help with, um, kind of different marketing flyers, to help get that information out, to really help support our businesses as the DDA's main goal is. The other thing we did is at the Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber Black Tie Gallon Expo, the DDA hosted a table there. At this table, we were able to kind of share some of the stuff we were doing, like the Jefferson and Elms parking lot, the art festival we're having up, and also to promote the DDA's facade improvement grant program. The other thing the DDA did was allocate about $3,000 to pay for the liability insurance for the Trenton Farmers Market, which is organized by the Vintage Market Mercantile. The first farmers market was May 2nd, but they're continuing every Thursday, so I hope everyone shows their support. I believe the next one's actually at the Cultural Center, but most of the time it's over at the Jefferson Elm parking lot. Really encourage everyone to sort of pour. Amazing vendors. I myself splurged on some roasted almonds, so I very recommend great vendors there. So this is kind of a quick graph explaining the plan to continue projects for the fiscal year coming up for '24, '25. About $90,000 for the art festival, which will encompass murals and art shows. murals and art show and scavenger hunt, which will be happening this year. The Jefferson Elm parking lot, about $55,000. The parking lot's gonna be improved, landscaping. Also some interest to pave alleyways, about $300,000. The Rotary Park Improvement, 2.4 mil. This will be with the Trenton Parks and Recreation Department and the Howie Family Foundation. There's also plans to fix a tree pit that's been budgeted, and that will happen sometime this year. Also, the DDA supported for the fireworks, so they're helping sponsoring that for the 2024 Trenton Summer Festival. Also, the electronic message board that will be going up for the City Hall, that'll be coming up soon, about $20,000. And also the flowers you're gonna be seeing down there, the DDA's for about $7,000, so City Beautiful to help make the downtown look real nice. So I'm gonna get into some of the projects, these big projects we're doing. One of the big things is the art festival to look forward to, which will be happening around September 7th to 14th. Be along Jefferson Avenue, one of the big things is about eight downtown Trenton businesses will be getting murals painted onto the building sides. Right now, we approved five sketches and one sculpture, and three sketches are still in progress to approve. Those will be going up sometime this summer. Art work will also be displayed inside multiple businesses in the downtown for a citywide art show. Artisan bases are still being acquired, and there'll be a lot of other mini events going on. Official announcements will be coming out around July with the official kind of activities, events, and stuff. So look forward to that. Also, the Jefferson Elm lot, which we didn't done this summer. Final designs are being approved and rolled out. These improvements will include repavement, landscaping, signage, and new furnishings like benches and stuff. And then lastly, the Rotary Park, like I said, with Parks and Recreation, the Howie Family Foundation are all funding this to help site improvements, redo the landscaping, a new boardwalk, improve shoreline restoration, and new playgrounds and furnishings as well to really make that a nice park. Another thing is I've updated all our documents to make sure we're in compliance. So the agendas and minutes are now on the website. I've also updated the DDA bylaws to have update the meeting time is right, as well as making sure it's stated that the $4,000 that the city council has to approve. That way, the DDA is following the rules. Also updated the event sponsorship guidelines, that's where we allocate money for events for businesses, and the facade improvement grant program to help commercial buildings update their exterior, and our meeting schedules out there. So it's all on the website. We're all following the rules. We're now completely compliant. So your next informational meeting will be held on November 18. You'll get the, basically what we've done from now all the way to the November, and it'll be kind of same, quick little gloss over. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much, Angelina. Well, does anyone from council have any questions or anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here too, Mark. Appreciate it. All righty. Yes, very exciting stuff. Next, we've got on the agenda here, public comment for items that are on today's agenda. This portion of public comment we'll have reserved for items that are on today's agenda and have another opportunity for all other public comment after. Anyone wishing to speak, Desi, please begin with your name and address. Please direct all questions through me. And please let me hear comments to five minutes. Not seeing anyone in person on Zoom. We'll move right on along then. And so we'll go to appointments from here. I'm asking for this body's concurrence to approve my reappointment of Jill Cooper and Scott Cabotin to the Library Governing Board for terms expiring July, June 30, 2026, Robert Johnson to the City Beautiful Commission, Nata Frost to the Historical Commission, Paul Frost to the Planning Commission, and John McDonald to the Recreation Commission, all with terms expiring June 1 of 2027.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Deputy Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Benedetti?
Yes.
Cabotin?
I think I have to abstain, don't I?
No, you're okay.
Am I okay? Then I'm okay. Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruzzi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Abstain.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you. Good flex out now. When we have to do the, I always just tie back to when we do it at the beginning of the term, that we'd all have to abstain on the master one that we do.
Well, that's true.
So yeah, so we're all right on this stuff. So, cool. All right, next, we've got two items from our city administrator here, Mr. Creach. First one we've got is the change of location of our council meetings in June. So pay close attention to folks at home and council as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you have proposal to move the two meetings in June, June 3 meeting would be at Westfield's Activity, Westfield Activity Center, and the June 17 meeting would be at Trenton Fire Station Number One Downtown. And I'm asking you to let the clerk advertise it as such.
So moved, support?
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And just remember to, for again, everyone here and those watching at home, that we'll be having study sessions immediately after those meetings as well, highlighting different buildings, including some of the ones that we will be in. So, next up, the other item here for Mr. Creach, the Guidance Center Assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual voluntary assessment for the Downriver Guidance Center. Involved, or inside your packet was all the, all the great things that the Guidance Center provides to various residents throughout the year, and this is the same amount as in the past. So I'm asking you to move and approve, to approve and pay the 2023-2024 voluntary assessment for the Guidance Center services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean.
Yes, sir.
All right. We've got one item here from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, the repair of two glass atrium roofs at City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Both glass atrium roofs at City Hall leak and require repair. We contacted over 20 glass contractors in the last six months, and only three of them responded. Of the three that responded, only one was committed to do the repairs and provide a quote due to the complexity of the job. Madison Glass Company specializes in this type of work, this type of work, as they have provided references to other municipalities that have had similar work done. They will reseal all the glass panels and also the flashing against the brick. Therefore, I'm requesting authorization to proceed with the provided quote from Madison Glass to repair the glass atriums in an amount not to exceed $14,345.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. We've got three item, oh, yes, three items from our HR Director, Ms. Perry here. First up, we have the business agreed, agreement with Accordware for a Benefits Information Management System.
Correct. Thank you very much. So yes, the first item here is for a benefit information system, and this would replace our manual processes as it relates to employees picking their healthcare benefits, dental, vision, and additional benefits. I've listed all the advantages, but really the greatest advantage is that it provides employees the opportunity to have access to this information readily available to them 24/7 without having to call HR. We're more than happy to help employees, but I also like to provide the tools so that they can get the information themselves. So tonight, I'm seeking your authorization to approve the contractual relationship with Accordware, pending legal review, and provide the authorization for signatures.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, we have the framework for renewal of a contract with Delta Dental.
Correct. And this one is, we'd like to renew with Delta Dental. This renewal includes the consolidation of our dental groups, and we will have an act group for all active employees and then retirees, and this is gonna allow for better streamlining for benefit administration. We also are gonna realign our, our contract renewal, so everything renews at the same time, the calendar year. And then we also lock in the administrative rates to 2026. So even though there is a projected rate increase, we did go out to market, we shopped what would be comparable to our plan, and Delta remains the most competitive, and they offer fantastic customer service, and it's a quality plan. So that's why we are seeking that, to renew this contract. So the final agreement will be prepared and forwarded to the city attorney for review. So tonight, I'm seeking your authorization to approve the framework for this renewal, pending the city attorney's review and authorization for signatures for the execution of the final contract.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Oh, I apologize.
Nope, you're fine. You looked that way first, or second. The only question I have is, so we're gonna make sure we update retirees and make sure they all get the information.
You're gonna be very pleased, yes.
Okay. Yeah, because sometimes they say they don't get told stuff.
Yes.
I can't believe a retiree would say that, but.
Yeah, so, and actually, they'll have access to the online system too. And we'll have educational systems if they don't need it, but yeah, you'll be very pleased with the streamlining of the benefits.
Okay, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And then lastly here, the framework for the contract with Standard Insurance Company.
Yeah, thanks. So this is related to many lines of coverage. So this includes life insurance, disability, supplemental insurance. And so we're asking to move from what we have various carriers, and we'd move all of the lines of coverage to Standard Insurance Company. The key provisions would include a guarantee rate for the next 30 months. Again, we're consolidating benefits under one provider. This is gonna allow for efficient billing and claim processing, and an annual savings of about $35,000. This contract also offers something that employees have requested, which is the ability to buy short-term disability insurance, and this would be for all full-time employees, including police and fire, which is not always, is not always easy to provide. And it also includes an enhanced employee assistance program, which I value at least at $4,000. So the first two items were spend, spend, but this one's saving the city approximately $40,000. So I'm seeking your authorization tonight to approve the framework for this contract with Standard Insurance Company, again, pending the city attorney's review, and authorize the signatures for the final contract.
Support. Or, so moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we've got two items from our Parks and Rec Director. The first one we have here is the Downriver Hockey Academy contract.
We could go back to Hacky Sock. It's always fun.
I don't know if that's fruitful, but.
Thank you, Mayor. The Downriver Hockey Academy has called the Kennedy Recreation Center home since 2012. The current contract for the DHA had expired, and we are proposing a one-year agreement with an automatic renewal for one additional year. The contract will allow for the DHA to remain in the Kennedy Recreation Center as a tenant on the second floor, and requires, requires them to pay a monthly rent and to purchase a minimum amount of ice per year. The contract will expire on August 31, 2025, looking for your approval for the DHA to remain a tenant at the Kennedy Recreation Center.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And then next up, purchase of the umbrellas for Kennedy Aquatic Center.
As we prepare to open for the 2024 summer, we are doing many maintenance items throughout the pool area. Last summer, two of our 20-foot umbrella canvases shredded and are not salvageable. The third 20-foot umbrella canvas and three 12-foot umbrella canvases are also showing their wear and tear and need to be replaced. On average, those umbrellas last about eight to 10 years. The Funbrella, it's a great word, but hard to say, brand is required to fit the existing Funbrella structures. Anchor Industries is a leading supplier of Funbrella products and has supplied a quote in the amount of $9,650. I'm asking you that we allow the purchase of six umbrellas for the Kennedy Aquatic Center, the amount of $9,650 from Anchor Industries.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Tim.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, and last, regular item we have here from our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Ms. Wilson, the request for emergency repair cement work on the final clarifier.
Thank you, Mayor. I am requesting an emergency repair cement work on one of our final clarifiers. This particular clarifier, which is number two of four, the cement has been deteriorating, I would say, over the past four or five years. We did try to do some patchwork on it, but after this past winter, it became obvious that this needs to be replaced right away. I have been working with CE Rains, our city engineer, about how we go about getting this. They did recommend, or they did say, excuse me, that we could patch it again, but they did recommend that we do this repair immediately, and replacing 120 linear feet of the tank, which is roughly half the tank, would be the best way to go for us. And it's something that we need to do, we need to approach immediately. So I'm asking your approval to go ahead and authorize this repair to JJ Barney Construction Company in the amount of $158,767.40, which 10% of this is contingency, and this will come out of our capital improvements account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Julie. All right, looks like we've got one late item here. Mr. Deputy Clerk from St. Joseph's School, a fundraiser event, fundraiser.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve a request from the St. Joseph's School to hold a fundraiser event and a fundraiser on Friday, May 31, from 9:30 to 1:30 p.m. in the church parking lot and adjacent public lot at the northwest corner of Elm and West Jefferson, and approve the temporary closure of the alley between both lots during the event, under the direction of the Department of Public Service and the Police Department.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, we'll go to our disbursements and statements and then our reports now. I will defer to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to make a motion to pay the disbursements for May 20, 2024, in Yamato $1,01,813.86.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Big motion, please, received and placed on file, the following reports, financial summary dated April 30, 2024, schedule of investment and cash on hands, April 30, 2024, civic commission minutes, March 4, 2024, cultural commission minutes, April 27, 2024, the DDA authority minutes, April 11, 2024, police and fire pension board minutes, May 8, 2024, historical commission minutes, April 8, 2024, library governing board minutes, March 6, 2024, fire department monthly report, April 2024, and police department report, monthly report, April 2024.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go to other council business now. Couple of quick things on my end. Just wanted to share with everyone too, that this Wednesday, May 22, at 5:30 p.m. at St. Paul's Lutheran Church, we have the Trenton Police Peace Officers Memorial Service honoring all first responders. Definitely want to encourage folks to attend. Unfortunately, I have a work conflict and won't be able to, but I know it was always a really good showing for that, along with the flag ceremony, really, really important things. So, again, that's this Wednesday at 5:30 at St. Paul's Lutheran Church, the Trenton Peace Officers Memorial Service honoring our first responders. Additionally, as we talked about earlier, I just wanted to make mention again, for folks watching at home, that we have moved our council meetings location-wise for the month of June, that they'll be held on the same dates and times as normal, except the first meeting in June will take place at the Westfield Center, and then the second meeting in June will take place at Fire Station One here in downtown Trenton. And so it'll be a good opportunity for folks to check out those facilities too, if they haven't had the opportunity to do so in some time. So again, and that's, again, I'm just, I think, hammering this home, so I also remember that I don't, and I don't show up here that night, so. And then lastly, too, we'll have a study session immediately following this meeting, where Mr. Beaker from Parks and Rec will be highlighting some of the recreation facilities that could be impacted by the Fire Police and Municipal Building Improvement Bond that we've sent to the ballot for August here. And we will have these study sessions again after those meetings in June, too, highlighting the police departments and the fire departments, and getting into the kind of nuts and bolts of what's going on in those buildings and how these, this could address it. So I'm just, they'll be posted on YouTube, and again, obviously airing on the city's cable channel like normal, but just really want folks to have the opportunity to watch those and get some good information. So that's all I've got this evening. And first, I'd actually had Councilwoman Bonk Crooks tonight, so since she is not here, we will go to Mayor Pro Tem Benedetti.
The only thing I, is again, congratulations to all the high school kids, the skaters, and the great grades. I didn't know kids could get GPAs that high, like you said. And then nothing else, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Hornbeck.
I just want to also say, congratulations to the graduating seniors. They graduate on the 31st on the football field, and the skating team as well, and their state placements, and Delaney Hale being a state champ and a national champ. It's pretty exciting. And good luck to all the Trenton baseball and softball players. Their seasons are getting underway, so if you see a lot of people carrying a lot of bats and balls around, you know that it's all the T-ball and softball and baseball players. My son actually had his first game tonight. So good luck to the Trenton Tigers as well. That's all I have.
That's great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Peruzzi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All righty. Councilman Cabotin.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, you know, thank you to all our police officers. I think, is it this week or last week was National Police Week? Last week, sorry. So, you know, Deputy Chief Ness, thank you very much to you and all the officers that serve Trenton. Also, this week is National Public Works Week, Public Works awareness week through the APWA. So Kevin, same to your team as well.
Works were in this week through the APWA, so Kevin, same to your team as well, thank you for all they do, have a very special appreciation for our folks that, that are in public services and public works, so there's a, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that the, the folks in public services don't get acknowledged for, if they didn't show up to their job on a daily basis, boy, we'd be in a, a whole world of hurt, so, thank you very much, Kevin, we really appreciate you and your team's efforts, so, other than that, Mayor, that's all I have to share tonight.
Great, thank you, Councilman, and Councilwoman Rodriguez.
I do not have anything this evening, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman, appreciate it, Mr. Deputy Clerk.
The next regular council meeting will be on June 3rd at 7 o'clock p.m. with a study session to follow.
Great, thank you, at the Westfield Center, too, remember it again, our sesser, Ms. Barnett, you got anything?
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you, I don't know if Mr. McCullough's here, man, do you have anything?
No.
All right, nothing from the treasurer's office either, any department hasn't have anything for us, no rush to the podium, all right, we'll go to public comment now, anyone wishing to speak, we ask you to begin with your name and address, please direct all questions through me, and please let me hear comments to five minutes, we'll go to anyone in person first, then those on the Zoom, for those that might be interested. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn here at 7:42 p.m. Moved and supported for adjournment, seeing no further discussion, unanimously so ordered, we're going to segue right into the study session, too, so, Tim, if you want to come right on up, we'll get it queued up.